We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight will be led by our Chief of Police, Mr. Dan Drummond.
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice
The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our legal counsel regarding one item of litigation, the City of West Sacramento versus the Department, California Department of Finance and the County of Yolo. No action was taken. So now we'll proceed to our general administration agenda. Before we begin with Item 1A, I do want to make a brief announcement for the public and an acknowledgement, and that is that our Chief of Police, who's been serving with distinction in the City of West Sacramento, after 36 years in law enforcement and serving our community ably since August of 2004, Chief Drummond is retiring. And he informed his, the department and the men and women of the West Sacramento Police Department earlier today, and on behalf of the council and the whole community, want to congratulate him and also express our deep gratitude to Chief Drummond. During, in the press release that's gone out, going out right now, noted that our community is a much safer place because of the leadership of Chief Drummond and the men and women that have served under his leadership, that property crime in our community has dropped 30 percent since August of 2004, when he was appointed chief. Violent crime has dropped by two-thirds since he was appointed chief. This is a much better community. Chief Drummond has been a leader both in our community, active in a variety of community-wide, county-wide, regional, region-wide initiatives and efforts through United Way, through the police chiefs of California, with our local Collings Teen Center, the Community Corrections Partnership Executive Committee. He is widely acknowledged as a leader in law enforcement. We've been very fortunate to have his leadership in our community and want to wish him the best. And by the city manager, I'd like to say a word as well.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Chief Drummond's just been an extraordinary police chief, well-respected throughout the community and the region. He's been a great pleasure to work with. He's also, in his retirement announcement, is willing to assist with the transition, including the budget development for the department, with his plans of leaving in June, early July. And we really appreciate his service and, more importantly, his character and the culture that he has provided to the department.
Chief, did you want to say a word? You don't have to, but I've been in these rooms where people are talking about me and I can't say anything.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Chief. All right, we're going to proceed then to, let me just note also on our agenda that we're going to be moving Item 8, which is currently scheduled for the consent agenda, and removing it from the consent agenda and taking it up under our regular calendar. All right, that brings us to Item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, we're prohibited by state law from taking up any items that are brought up under Item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public hearing, for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item tonight to please fill out one of the yellow cards, it's available near the front door, and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that simply indicates which agenda item we are currently considering. We recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can cause some anxiety, so we do ask that there not be any boos or even applause or cat calls or other demonstrations, and we try to maintain a civil discourse in the chambers. We take the cards, the requests to speak, all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the council questions and the public comment have begun, we don't take any additional cards, so if you have an interest in speaking on an item that's on the agenda later this evening, the earlier the better for turning in the card, but no later than the conclusion of the staff report. So with that, we're going to, we are going to proceed to Item 1A, and I want to go directly first to a special, a very special guest that we have. And I was actually going to ask Councilmember Johannesen to do, make a brief comment because we're here tonight in large part because of Mr. Johannesen's leadership in connecting our community, and we're very pleased to have tonight with us the Consul General from Mexico for an exciting partnership that we're intending to launch. And Mr. Johannesen, would you like to say some, a couple of opening remarks?
Sure. Yeah, this is really an exciting visit by the Consul General of Mexico. West Sacramento will be hoping, hosting the Quautemoc ship, which is a training vessel, Mexican training vessel that will visit the port either this year or next year, the details are still to work out. But I'm really excited about the ship being here and about the ramifications for development of friendship between not only the Consul General and the City of West Sacramento, but the effect that will have on the region. And I'm looking forward to our participation and joint participation in that event.
Yeah, we're absolutely thrilled that Consul General Gonzalez Gutierrez is here this evening. This is, it's a, it's a great honor for us and for the community. Our two places, both the community of West Sacramento and the, and the, the country of Mexico have a long intertwined past together. So many of our, the residents of our community either were born in or have ancestors and family who were born in Mexico and maintain close ties to family members and friends that are, that are there. And so the continuing relationships between our two communities have been long established. But Mexico is also one of the world's most strongly emerging economies in terms of the strength of the growth of the Mexican economy, the dynamism of what it has to offer, and promoting the mess, the better information in our own community and in our region about the important opportunities for trade, for mutual economic benefit between the country of Mexico and our, our own community and through our port, the entire region is, I know a priority for the Consul General and for us as well, that I think a lot, many, many in this country could, would do well to, to get up to speed on what's really happening in the Mexican economy and the important role that it is beginning to play worldwide and the potential connections for the private sector in both of our communities to prosper as a result. And so let me, without further ado, invite the Consul General to please come up to the podium and give us a few remarks. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Muchisimas gracias. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. It's an honor to be present at your council meeting today. I take the opportunity to thank Mayor Christopher Cavaldon for hosting us today and City Council Member Mark Johannesen, who had the initiative of inviting us to this council meeting. Councilmember Villegas, Councilmember Kristoff, thank you very much for the opportunity. And thank you also for the invitation for the Quautemoc vessel and its crew to visit the port of West Sacramento, either this year or next year, as part of the vessel's international city tour. We have already sent that invitation to our embassy in Washington, DC, and we would be able to provide you with an answer relatively soon. As you know, Quautemoc has sailed around the world and received countless awards while visiting several countries. The most recent, Ireland, where the Quautemoc participated in the Dublin Tall Ships Festival during August 2012. A potential visit of the ship to the port of West Sacramento would represent an honor for Mexico and good add to the vessel's history, the fact of having visited a highly important, dynamic, and business-friendly city. I want to highlight that, besides the importance that the ship per se entails, I see this invitation as a great opportunity to reaffirm the economic, political, and social importance our countries have on each other. Let me tell you that according to the U.S. Census Bureau, the 24 counties covered by my consular jurisdiction total a population of approximately 4.5 million people, out from which almost 1 million are of Mexican origin, of Mexican descent, and almost 300,000 were born in Mexico. We are taking, we are, we are talking about people representing the strongest family links that unite Mexico with Northern California. The potential visit of the Quautemoc will foster future political and economic opportunities that will bring prosperity to both Mexico and California. I want to recognize the city of Sacramento for taking this initiative. As you know, Mexico is California's number-one exports market and the buyer of $26 billion in California products. No other country, Mr. Mayor, is more important to California in terms of trade and creation of jobs. Having said this, I will keep you posted on the answer we receive, and I thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councilmembers, for giving my country the honor of visiting this council meeting and having the posi, and opening up the possibility of visiting your beautiful city through the vessel of the Quautemoc. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's rare that we have a Consul General come and visit us, but thank you very much for coming. Your presence is always welcome. I know you've been extremely engaged in the region and certainly in our city on many affairs, and so thank you for coming, and we look forward to seeing the Quautemoc as well. Thank you.
Kristoff?
Yeah, I too would echo my fellow councilmember's comments. This is really more than just the opportunity for our port to host a ship. This is an opportunity for friendship, for reaching out, for continuing to further the relationships that we do have, making them even stronger. And I, for one, really appreciate the fact that the mayor and Councilmember Johannesen have taken the initiative to try to foster better relationships and try to foster closer relationships so that we get to know you, because I think that as we get to know people better and better through whatever means necessary, we become a better nation and we become a better state. And of course, we become a better city. And so I, I really appreciate the opportunity to have the dialogue and have the discussion and shake some more hands.
And no other, no other major city in this region has had more city council members of Mexican descent serve in it, on its governing body. This is a community that has strong and deep ties, so we're looking forward both to the Quautemoc and also to the, to the continuing strengthening of the ties between our two communities. Thank you so much for being part of tonight. All right, next, we're going to proceed to item, we have no other request under Item 1A. Am I correct, Madam Clerk? I have too many papers. Ah, here it is, sorry. Sandra Maldonado, from the Yolo County Children's Alliance, welcome.
Hello, and good evening. My name's Sandra Maldonado. I work with Yolo County Children's Alliance, and I'm here to provide an update. We've currently moved from the Alice Norman Education Center to the Bright Elementary School at 637 Todd Hunter Avenue, where we're providing services as Medi-Cal Healthy Families, Kaiser, and the CalFresh Food Stent Program. And we're currently in the process of, with VIDA, we have a kickoff this Friday and February 2nd at the Arthur F. Turner Library, and we just want to invite everybody to come out and volunteer and join us. So if you can get the word out, please, that we've moved and that we are going to have a kickoff for VIDA. Okay?
Can you tell folks at home a little bit about what VIDA is or what, what is expected as part of it?
Well, VIDA is a volunteer income tax assistance program. There's six of us in the office that are certified, and it's a free service to the community. Last year, our numbers doubled, and we provided, in our office alone, a refunded amount back to the community of a half a million dollars. So we're hoping this year to keep up that good work and hopefully increase the numbers.
Great. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, then that brings us to Item 1B, which is council communications. Are there reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Johannesen?
Just quickly, Mr. Mayor, the Community Choice Aggregation Committee met, and just to give a brief status update, they decided to go ahead and examine who in the consulting world can do a feasibility study to determine really what the community choice aggregation is going to cost. So the next meeting, we should have a list of these potential consultants to do that. And of course, that's going to bring to the, the participants the potential spread between the different rates that might be payable under a community choice aggregation and what that would mean in terms of the contribution of the different municipalities. So at this point, it's still wait and see, waiting for the feasibility study to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Johannesen. Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, very briefly, I, I know we are going to hear as part of our agenda a very thorough and report from the Corps of Engineers, but at the same time, West Sac, West Sac Safka met last Thursday, and the major issue discussed in that meeting was authorizing General Manager Ken Rusich to execute options to purchase borrow materials. It's very expensive. One would be really surprised at the price of dirt, but at the same time, it's, it's very, very expensive. And so we, that was our major item that we had on our agenda.
All right, Mr. Villegas?
So, yeah, just earlier this evening, the Port Commission met, and as part of our ongoing series of meetings that we've been having to develop the port's business plan, last night, there was a very successful community forum. I understand the port chairman attended, as well as many folks in the community and business folks. And this evening, at the Port Commission, we authorized the request for maritime, or for, request for interest for maritime operators of our northern terminal, so we'll see how that shakes out.
All right, and I should note, Councilmember Ledesma is home, representing the hundreds of West Sacramentoans that have the flu, and so we wish him well, and we expect him back at the, at the next meeting. And just couldn't, he could not bring himself to infect everyone else in the chambers tonight, so we appreciate that. I have a, a report back from, from last week, I was in Washington, DC, so pursuant to the legal requirements, I'm going to do the disclosure, but also there are some significant issues that were brought up during the, that trip. I was there for the U.S. Conference of Mayors' Winter Meeting and for the inauguration, but we also met with various federal agencies and members and committees of Congress about our federal agenda. I was there and, as well as the city manager and Mr. Lukin from our staff, covering a variety of these sessions. So a lot of topics are, obviously, our key, our, you know, our key priority has been on the flood protection side, and did meet with the Corps about that issue and about staying on track with the general reevaluation report, which we'll hear more about later this evening, and those, those issues. It was a productive meeting with the Corps. Also discussed were the, the channel deepening project and how to, how to move forward with channel deepening and with our dredge material management plan to manage the, the silting up of the channel under, at its current geometry. Met with, we had two separate meetings with Doris, Congresswoman Matsui and her senior staff on those issues, as well as the streetcar project and the crediting issue with respect to the, to our flood protection investments. And she has been dogged as an advocate on, on these issues. She has, as a matter of practice, you know, weekly or bi-weekly calls with the Corps, District Office, as well as with FTA in, in Washington, DC, to make sure that, you know, that, that there's appropriate attention being placed on meeting the schedules on all those projects. And our, our key pieces are now going to be part of those regular calls, and so they've been really helpful advocates for us as well. Mr. Lukin and the city manager met with, with the mayor, the maritime administration, around issues at the port, in particular, in the Marine Highway and the, and the barging opportunities that we're looking to secure. We met with the Democratic staff of the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee and the Democratic, the, 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 the committee staff for the Senate Environment and Public Works Committee, which is chaired by Senator Boxer, with a primary interest in WERA, the Water Resources Development Act, which has implications for both the flood issues and the port issues. And, you know, one, I think one positive outcome of those conversations was there's, there is a, appears to be a high degree of confidence that a WERA bill is going to at least move out of, move through the Senate and possibly through the House as well. There's, there's strong support by both the Republican and Democratic leadership of the committee and the Senate, and apparently pretty significant support on the House side as well for moving it quickly. That's positive. And to move it, including language that would solve the credit issue on the, on the, on the flood investment side. So that's, if, if we're able to achieve that, that's a major step forward. That's partly enabled by the fact that, you know, the committee's chair is Barbara Boxer, who's been, she and Senator Feinstein have been outstanding on this issue, along with Congressman Thompson and Congresswoman Boxer, Matsui, to advance it. So it's been very clear that this is a priority for, for California. But the ranking Republican member, the new one, is Senator Vidar from Louisiana, and they're having the same issues with respect to levies and crediting issues there, and so that it's been a non-issue in terms of the partisan divide in Washington, DC. So that was a very, that was very positive. We did convey the importance of moving the Southport project along as quickly as possible, and that one key issue there, in addition to the processing of it with the Corps, is our ability to assure the state of California that the crediting, that we will be eligible for crediting, and so that it, those issues go hand in hand. And we actually didn't need to brief much on that because there's such, it's, it's quite remarkable how much knowledge there is in Washington, DC about the West Sacramento flood project and some of these, these critical issues. And so if we can get a WERA solution, that would be, you know, very positive. It is also the case that the Assistant Secretary of the Corps, who revoked the credit eligibility, will be appearing before both Senator Feinstein and Senator Boxer's committees in the, in the coming months, and so we expect that there'll also be questions appropriately placed before her as to the implications and consequences and why it makes sense for the federal government not to encourage local communities and states to make investments now in, in flood protection improvements, rather than, than have money sit in the bank and wait for a federal appropriation. So those were all very, very positive. We met with the White House about this same topic. They remain advocates for us. OMB, which is traditionally problematic on issues like this, solidly on our side on the credit issue in particular. And so the White, the mayor of Des Moines, Iowa, and I've been pushing on this issue with the White House. Iowa mayors tend to have more influence with presidential, folks who run in presidential primaries, so we've been going together. But, but the White House is a sense, and I think this is shared by mostly the other players in the Capitol, is that we both have strong cases, but ours, we have better, ours is better, so that we should lead with the West Sac project on crediting, on the credit eligibility piece, with the, with the Des Moines and the Louisiana and some other communities cheering us on, but that we have one of, we have the strongest case, set of facts essentially to move forward, so that we ought to proceed pretty expeditiously in terms of submitting some initial credit determinations on the, for the Southport project. So the White House meeting was very positive in, in that domain. We also, I also briefed the White House folks on our streetcar project, but we don't have a specific ask at this point, just trying to tee them up for, once we've submitted to the, to the FTA. Met with Congressman John Garamendi, and our, at his request, he is on the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee and the, he's a, he was just this week being appointed to the Water Resources Subcommittee of that committee, and so he will be very involved in the writing of WERA on the House side, as much as a member of the Democratic minority can be. So that will also be helpful. He's, you know, although we're not in his district, you know, he represents the, the whole stretch of the Sacramento River, we're this little carve-out, and he comes through our district, through our city to get to the rest of his district from Walnut Grove. He's very sympathetic and understands the issues that we have on both the port and on the flood projects, and is definitely is committed to being an advocate in the Subcommittee on that process as well. Met with the Secretary of Education, who, you know, I think I said early, a couple months ago that they had done these district-level race-to-the-top grants, they're going to be doing another round of them, and he strongly encouraged us, our, our community, our district to, to apply, so I'm going to, the next two-by-two meeting or the other appropriate venue, convey, convey that to the, to the district. Those applications are stronger when they have the partnership of, of other local civic partners, including cities, but that, as, as you know, I think GALT, GALT won $15 million or something on that order, as one of the few California districts that was successful in the first round. But as a second-round applicant, he said he thought we could, we could put together a winning application. And then finally met with the federal, the Administrator of the Federal Transit Administration, Peter Rogoff, who is here. Mr. Ledesma was with me two weeks ago at SecoG when Administrator Rogoff was here with Secretary LaHood, and it was clear at that, at that session that the Administrator was supportive in concept of the streetcar, of our streetcar project, but had some specific questions and concerns, and so this was an opportunity to meet with him in detail about those issues and to hear, you know, very specifically, okay, what, what's bothering you, what's on your mind, what do we have to fix, under what timeframe in order to be successful? It was a very productive meeting in that, in that sense. We got very detailed feedback from him about, and his team, the leadership team at FTA around what's going to be necessary for us to be successful with our small starts application for the streetcar project, and with a continued, you know, continued agreement that we should proceed right away, that we, we should be submitting during this cycle for, for small starts. So all in all, a very, very positive set of advocacy meetings. So, yeah. Okay, if there are no other communications, then Item 1C is council appointments, and this is the evening, in the two-year cycle, in which make appointments to the city's various boards and commissions. We had an extraordinary number of West Sacramento citizens volunteer and apply to serve on the city's various boards and commissions, quite a few applicants, and I took the opportunity to interview, I think in total, by the time we were done, nearly 50 of the applicants one-on-one, and it's, at once, it was both frustrating because there's so many people that want to serve, and there's only so many slots on these commissions, but really quite invigorating, because there's a huge diverse number of citizens in our community who want to step up, who are excited about what's happening, want to do good in the city, want to help, want to volunteer their time and their expertise. And so although the actual appointments can only be to the number of seats that are here, I think the, and I know the council has, has also seen all the applications, and it was very encouraging to see the level of community engagement and civic volunteerism by, by, by folks in, in this pool. And partly because of that, I made a special effort in this round of appointments to appoint more new commissioners. We've traditionally reappointed virtually all the commissioners unless they die or move, and I, and, and as the city has grown and the population of the community has gotten bigger and more diverse, I've tried to, in this round in particular, I think appoint for every one of the commissions, save one, to appoint at least two new commissioners, and in some case, three or four, to try to bring some new voices to the table, while also taking advantage of the, of the long-term expertise and continuity that it's necessary for our commissions to be fully engaged, right? Having all new commissioners doesn't work either if everyone has to learn all the issues and the language over and over again, so try to achieve that balance. And so I would make the following appointments, and at the conclusion, ask for the council for a motion to confirm them. First, to the Commission on Aging, reappearance of Elena Birch-Santos and Dante Early and Jaclyn Noble are the three proposed reappearance, and then James Joseph and Susan Tarleton is the new appointments. For the Agriculture and Natural Resources Commission, reappearance of John Kennedy and it's Faiz, not Faiz or on this paper, but Faiz Porhosini, and then new appointments of Colleen Heiner, Annie King, and Jeff Stoddard. For the Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Commission, reappearance of Gail Clower, John Kloss, and Denise Seals, and reappearance of Shelley Hayes and John Scoglan. For the Board of Appeals, reappearance of Diane Gould and Brayon Davis, and new appointments of Chris Carlino, Ryan Rafteran, Richard Reed. For the Economic Development Advisory Commission, reappearance of Michael Brady, Patrick Henning, Vincent Wetzel, Yan Zhu, and James McNerney, and then new appointments of Kyle Glanker and Andrew Sternfels. For the Housing Commission, reappearance of Min Lee, Aaron Sands, Marty Swingle, A.J. Tendek, and Thomas Vu, and new appointments of Alex Kelter and Lori Lackey. And new appointments of Alex Kelter and Lori Lackey. For the Parks Commission, Bernadette, reappearance of Bernadette Austin, Daniel Clayton and Karina Orozco and Greg Price. New appointments of Matthew Hargrove, Don Peterson, with one appointment pending, we'll make in the following, next month. For the Planning Commission, reappearance of Russ Lebig, Charles Moore, Jeremy Olson, Beverly Sandin and Joe Galvahn, not Joe Gaden, sorry, that's a typographical error. And a new appointment of Martha Flammer. There's, there's something missing off this page. Oh, I'm sorry, and Jennifer Perez is a reappearance. And then for the mosquito, Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District, reappearance of Raul Deanda. And to the City Disaster Council, a new appointment of Peggy Bell. All right. So is this sheet with the addition of Jennifer Perez at planning and the correction of Joe Gaden to Joe Galvahn at planning as well.
I don't think he would accept it.
I don't know. Former city manager as a planning commissioner. I would move the appointments.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. So those appointments take effect immediately. And I know the city clerk's going to be notifying those who are not present. So I want to, I'd like to, on behalf of the council, congratulate the new commissioners and thank them for their willingness to serve. But I also really, you know, if there are any of the other scores and scores of applicants who did volunteer and stepped forward to serve on one of these commissions, first say thank you for, for, for doing so. We had a tremendous bench of, of both talent and enthusiasm among our citizens in this round. We haven't, we're not adding new commissions, but, but also to encourage, to reapply again as vacancies come up. We keep these applications on file for the full two-year cycle. So if commission seats become vacant for any reason, we do go back to the, to those applications in addition to soliciting new ones as vacancies emerge. And then as always, there's, there's dozens and dozens of other volunteer opportunities in the community that if you've got, if you still have, you know, every Thursday evening at six o'clock open, that here at City Hall, we're help, we're happy to help connect folks to other ways to contribute to the community. But congratulations to the appointments and thanks to all of the applicants and the council members for, for their participation in the process. All right. That brings us then to the consent agenda, which is items two through nine minus item eight. Are there any items I consent, any member of the council wishes to remove or any item for separate question or comment?
Question, comment, five at seven.
All right. Item five, it's consideration of authorization to participate in the Sacramento Regional Bike Share Project Study. Mr. Vegas.
Just a quick comment. That's fine, Mike. I just wanted to just bring it to the council's attention. So I know that, you know, we've kicked around the idea sort of informally about the whole bike share program. There's been a lot of municipalities that have tried this but have failed. And I think the thing that I was looking for as we adopted similar participation on behalf of the Yolo County Transportation District was to make sure that we were exploring or looking at those municipalities that had tried it and why it wasn't successful because there's been a lot of sort of false starts with this program. It's not as easy as it might seem. And so I was looking for that and that was absolutely, absolutely a key component of what the plan is, is to roll out. Because I know in Washington DC, I know for example, that's one that we've used as part of our cap-to-cap trip on, on regular basis. And they didn't, I mean, it works great now, but it didn't start that way. And so I was hoping that we could make sure that as part of our exploration that we would learn, we would find a way to make sure that the lessons learned are front and center. So that was it.
Yes, Mr. Pollan, I totally agree. I also think, you know, one of the challenges with this, the bike share projects really globally has been in places that have tried to design them like another government program as opposed to design something that is viable in the private sector, right? So it's, it's driven by actual, by actual numbers, where customers are, what they're willing to pay, what they're willing to do. The private companies that run most of these, that operate most of these in the rest of the, in the rest of the world now. And so being, being attentive to that dimension of it, that what you're really trying to do is how do you set the conditions right for a successful, non, you know, no gigantic public subsidy operation of one of these systems? Because they, they, the ones that work are working quite well. And I'm definitely supportive of it. So I think keeping that in mind that we're not, you know, as we develop a 27-member executive committee and all these agencies that we don't over-government it. So one, one request I would have, because this is a staff-level sort of technical committee that's, that's, that's working on this, is that we get regular check-ins about how this is, how this is going. Obviously, core interest for us is going to be, as we, as we get to the point where we're ready to deploy a regional system, where are this, where are the, you know, where, where are the stations? What do we need to help do to help make sure that we have the appropriate ones in our city, that we're working on the, delivering the rights away for them to get built and all of that? Because we, well, we don't, we certainly don't want to have a regional bike share system that is, doesn't, doesn't cover, you know, at least a portion of our community from the outset. And that will require our, that doesn't just happen. That, you know, that's both a question of where the demand centers, jobs and people and restaurants and theaters and everything and baseball stadiums. But it's also a question of who's prepared to put up, you know, provide the free, the free right-of-way in the sidewalk or at the park for the station to be, to occur. And so, you know, I want to make sure we're, I want to just be up to date on what's going on so that we're, we're, we can be appropriately supportive from a policy and fiscal perspective where it's, where it's, where it's necessary, you know, for this to be, to work.
I guess for me, the message that I would have for staff and one of the core issues that I will look at is, is we need to make sure that it is financially feasible. I think that the finances of this are going to be very important. If it has worked well in other communities or other areas, those kinds of things should be looked at and find out what's the best policies that they've put in place to make it all work. But at the same time, I think that the, the limited budgets that, especially a city our size, we're small, and the limited budgets that we have and limited resources, we need to make sure that we prioritize those and make sure that whatever monies we do have go for the best system.
All right. Item seven is consideration of word of contract to Alfa Security for the City of West Sacramento Facility Security Services. Mr. Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to follow up. So the, so as we, you know, as the, well, I said the urbanization, but yeah, the urbanization, I guess, or the, or sort of the, the rebirth of our downtown on West Capitol Avenue with Civic Center and City Hall and the library and all the other services and amenities and all the people that we now have, this is very important as we kind of proceed down this path to make sure that we have adequate security. Not to overstate it, but it is important. And I know as part of our library, we want to make sure that we're protecting that, that investment as well. And so I, I know that we've had conversations with the Community College and with the County Library folks to make sure that everybody's sort of has a little bit of skin in the game. So as we go down this path, I would just encourage staff to continue to dialogue with the other parties to make sure that everybody is kicking. And I know everybody wants to. I think there was, there's been some very, very good meetings. So I just, I echo, I think in large part what staff is already saying, but I just want to keep it on the radar. But this is, this, I support the, the staff's recommendation on this, on this contract. Just want to shed a little light on that issue.
All right. And then if there's nothing further, is there a motion on the consent agenda minus number eight? Moved by Mr. Johansson. Seconded by Mr. Kristof. So no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. Item eight is consideration of lease agreement with Dell Financial Services for Information Technology Servers and Infrastructure. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This item is coming back to you for a second time. Previously, you, the council asked for more information on the financing aspect of the lease purchase agreement that's before you. Basically, what we're asking the council to do is to approve a five-year lease purchase agreement, which would allow us to acquire a new storage area network. This is the backup system for all of the city's computer data, to implement a new remote disaster recovery system and to acquire some more servers so that we can optimize our virtualization system. The, a more complete description of the three items is attached, is in attachment one here. The last meeting, again, the council wanted some more information on the comparison between outright purchase versus a lease purchase agreement. There is a attachment two, which is on the back of attachment one, has a comparison of the, the cash purchase versus the lease purchase using a discount rate of 1.62%. The, the undiscounted cost to the city over the five-year period would be $28,000 more doing it through the lease purchase. And the discounted rate would be $9,800 more over the period of time. And we're recommending that we proceed with this for a few reasons. One, the, the current sand that we have is no longer going to be supported by the vendor as of next month. And ironically, we're starting to have some operational issues with it. And this is a vital piece of, a part of our IT infrastructure. The, the lease, every year, we, we, in the Equipment Fund, we set aside a certain amount of money for incremental replacement of equipment. The amount of money that the lease is going to cost is not that much more than we, what we had been traditionally budgeting every year. So by entering into this lease purchase agreement, we avoid a substantial capital outlay of funds and then still continue with the historical amount that we have budgeted for the lease purchase. So I'd be happy to answer any more questions for you. Our IT manager, Rob Miller, is here. If you have super technical questions on the equipment himself, he can answer those better than I can. And, and available to answer more questions for you too. Thank you.
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, Carol, this, the majority of this cost is for the storage facility, right?
That's, that's correct.
Has, and this is just really a question, is the state of cloud storage such that cities are doing that as opposed to hosting their own storage?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Miller to respond to that question.
I'm Mayor Baldwin, Council. Mr. Johansson, cloud storage, we looked into that as an option, but the part that the sand would be using would be like infrastructure as a service. And I don't feel that that cloud storage service is actually up to par yet. I would say if the next time that we visit this in five to seven years, we should really look heavily at it. But at the current moment, there's really only two major vendors, Microsoft and Amazon, that are kind of in that arena. And I just don't feel it's mature enough yet to venture that way. It's putting all of our storage on that, in the cloud.
Okay, that's fair. Thanks. So the, the table, the, the table, the comparison table between lease purchase and cash purchase with the present value is really helpful and I'm glad, thanks for, for doing it. We didn't get the one that compares on the, to the, to just straight-up leasing, which I imagine would be worse. The dollars, is that right?
Yes, it would be. It's a more expensive option. The other, the other table in the report just mentions that verbally, that it's, it's more to do that.
And it's more during this period? Because, I mean, to get to this other issue of, I mean, to do a lease purchase and at the end of that, at the end of that five years, in the end of two years, it may be that, that these alternative, the kinds of alternatives that were just raised by Mr. Johansson's questions are more mature. We, I mean, we can't really predict the speed at which that, that, that technology is, is really, the technology and the market for it is evolving.
That's correct.
And so, I mean, it's, which sort of raises the question, why would we, why would we want to enter, enter an agreement where at the end of it, we would, we would send, we would now own all of this equipment precisely at the moment where that it may be not obsolete, but not, not necessarily competitive with some of these other alternatives?
We chose not to go the lease route because the lease route would be great if we felt you're right, if the lifetime of the product was going to be put over the lease. So if the equipment would last for three years and we did a lease for three years, we would return it, maybe change our whole focus. As an IT manager, I don't really like to shift technology that quickly because I think we stabilize out pretty well and we standardize on Dell. I do believe that over the next five years, that whole market's going to shift. And while you're correct in the fact that I think we could lease it for a shorter amount of years and maybe look at changing our technology focus, I believe the five-year model is, from my perspective, pretty solid because at the end of five years, technology is going to change 100% anyway. And, and I'm rambling, which I apologize for. At the end of five years, the technology is going to change anyway. And at that point, I believe that's when we should look at entering into the, either the cloud service or something there. But I just don't feel that in the next five years, the technology that we're currently using would be obsolete. And we'd have to re-approach this anyway because the equipment itself is really only good for a five to seven-year lifetime. So even if we entered into it now, in five years from now, we'd still have to look at replacing it with a different infrastructure.
So, but, but that raises a question of why a lease, why a lease purchase is better than a lease? If at the end of the five-year period, the equipment's either not good or there are better altern, if we would, if we, if there's a strong chance that we would be looking towards replacing it anyway, a structure that, that essentially has us paying now to own it at the end of the five years seems like it might not be the most, the most optimal.
We could look into a true lease versus a lease purchase. I do not believe currently, from what I understand from Dell, that would really change our costs. We could look at a true lease. So at the end of the five years, we could, or whatever timeframe we're looking at, we could return the equipment and maybe look at different options or refinance and continue to keep that equipment for an extended period of time.
So you think a straight lease, the actual, the actual lease cost would be?
I, I would have to believe a true lease cost would be very similar. The only benefit is, and the only negative or benefit is that we want to own the equipment or have a dollar buyout. We'd just return the equipment and then go back into looking for new equipment.
Mr. Mayor, we've had instances previously where we've had lease purchases and then a new, a new piece of equipment comes on the market and we actually can go back and renegotiate the lease into something, into something different. Usually the vendors are, are fairly responsive, not necessarily with I, with, recently with IT, but previously we've done that.
All right. Thank you. And any other questions or discussion on item eight? Is there a motion?
I'll move the item. Second.
Moved by Mr. Kristof and seconded by Mr. Vegas. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. That motion carries. That brings us then to our regular agenda, item 10, which is presentation of potential refinancing of the Community Facility District 20, Bridgeway Lakes 2, special tax bonds. Mr. Blumberg.
Yeah. The item we have before you tonight is another potential refinancing. And it's an information item, just to let you know some of the details. The report's in front of you, so I'll just hit the highlights. Again, we're talking about refinancing about 9.6 million in bonds that are outstanding that were issued for the CFD 20 or the Bridgeway Lakes 2 subdivision back in 2005. Now, we believe that we're going to realize a little over a half a million dollar in savings from this refinancing. And the schedule's pretty quick. We would hope to be back to you February 20th for your authorization to, to refund the bonds and then we would close in, in mid-March. A couple of issues that I just wanted to point out to you is, is really related to how we would use the savings. And we wanted to raise that issue now. You don't need to make a decision tonight, but any feedback you want to give us would be appreciated. The savings could be used for some capital improvements within subdivision. Just point out, we do have the park and then Bridgeway Lake there. And there are a number of CIP items, things that need to be replaced like pumps for the lake, which, you know, if we don't have any other source of funds, would have to be funded through the city's general fund. So while this is savings for the CFD, it could also be something that equates to general fund money saved if we don't have to, to use those funds to replace equipment. And of course, the other option would be where we reduce the property owner's assessments. And what we've estimated is that the savings could result in about $77 per year, average, on average, for the homeowners there. So with that, with that said, really no action necessary tonight. We wanted to let you know that we're looking at another opportunity. We hope to, to be back to you February 20th.
And you didn't, you shortcut because we've done a million of these. But just to reemphasize that when we're doing these refinancings, we're simply taking advantage of the reduced interest rate environment from when we've previously issued bonds for a variety of purposes. And we're not extending the terms on any of these. We're not, so we're not stretching out. We're not borrowing against future generations in order to do this. We're simply trying to achieve savings that's out, that's easily achieved out, easily by our team in terms of these, these issues. For me personally, I think at least a portion, I mean, the, when we say if we don't fund them from this source, they're general fund, but that we don't have the general fund to do it. And so to some extent, they are necessary improvements in the subdivision that may or that will, they will occur at some point, but fixing the pump in the lake 15 years from now is, has its consequences in the subdivision too. So I, I don't object conceptually, I think it makes sense conceptually actually for some of the savings to be used in the subdivision for the same kind of improvements or to fix the improvements from, from, that were originally funded. At the same time, I do think, you know, at least half, a majority of the savings should be passed along to the, to the, to the property, to the homeowners in the subdivision that we should, that they ought to, they certainly ought to be sharing significantly in the savings that's, that's out. savings that's, that's out there for the same reason. Because there's, just as we're struggling to, to maintain the facilities that serve them, they are struggling for the variety of the issues in the economy as well. So, you know, if, you know, if we said, you know, even if we said something like, of this, you know, $50 of the savings is going to go back to the homeowner and $25 will go to the, to the maintenance and the improvements in their subdivision, that sort, and I'm not saying that's, that number specifically, but you know, that, that sort of balance, to me, makes some sense around what's, what's fair and what's appropriate, given, given the needs of the neighborhood and individual, the individual homeowners there. Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, I, I would concur. I mean, I think that it, it really shows a leap of faith, if you will, and it's, it shows good financial stewardship by you and your team and, and the city. Because here, we have an opportunity to save some money through refinancing. And if some of that money goes back to the property owner, they're going to feel a little bit better about it. They're going to feel that, hey, you know, the, the city's really sort of looking after us a little bit. Now, certainly they'll have some questions. Your phone will ring because they'll think something's gone on because this normally doesn't happen. But at the same time, I think that, you know, if you're really well-prepared for that and, and, and you just tell them, no, we refinance a bond, your Melo Rus bond was, had a 6% rate or whatever it is, it's 2% or 3%, whatever that is. I, I think that really sends a, a good signal to our constituents that we're looking out after them. And I do think that some of that money should be put aside for fixing and repairing things that are going to go wrong. So I think that there, there's a balance there. I, I like the idea. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I think, like, sending the whole thing back doesn't make sense. I mean, I don't want to be the state government that's like, hey, here's a tax refund, oh, and now we're bankrupt and now, now we need a tax increase to pay for the stuff that we just sent you the money back for. We should be prudent. And so if it's, if it is $77, which is just your estimate, but I mean, if, I think, you know, paying attention to that balance makes, makes a lot of sense. Other, other comments?
Yep, no make sense.
All right, thank you very much. Great work. Right, item 11, highlight of the evening, is an update on the West Sacramento Levy Improvement Program and presentation by the United States Army Corps of Engineers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm here to open up this presentation, give you an update about the progress that we're making, the West Slip is making throughout the city. I was giving this presentation this morning as Greg Faben also is ill with the, with the flu. I have our team of super experts in the, in the background here, if you have any questions about the presentation. And then I'll be introducing the Army Corps. So I'm going to cover a, just briefly cover a few things about what's been happening, what we've completed, where we are today in terms of our Southport project and some other issues that are critical to the flood protection program. So first and foremost, let me just say, this slide presents a couple of different things, a couple of different projects that we've already completed. So the I Street project, as well as these, was completed in 2008. CHP and the rivers were both completed in 2011. And then slip repairs were completed by the Army Corps of Engineers with the cooperation of DWR and West SAFCA. And as you know, the Army Corps has been the lead agency taking care of the SAC bank project outside of the ports, north of the Southport project that we're presently working diligently to bring forward. So where we are today is, a year ago, you received a presentation on 15% alternatives. Those were produced and evaluated about which was, what was technically feasible, what's, what are viable alternatives to try to achieve the entire 5.6 mile reach. These are alternatives in terms of how they were designed, varied in setback length, which is a requirement of the DWR early implementation project guidelines. Today, where we stand is 65% drawings were released and provided to the Army Corps of Engineers. They will be presented to the West SAFCA Board at the February meeting. Between then and now, between last year and now, we've completed two value engineering studies for segments B and F. These value engineering studies were done principally for, to try to look at different, different setback levies, to try to minimize the loss of property, especially to residential properties. And ultimately, the board approved the staff recommendation following these value engineering studies. Moving on to the environmental document, the EIR/ES is going through its third administrative draft, and we anticipate that that will be released before the end of the month. And a public draft will be released sometime in the next couple of months. In terms of project funding, MBK has submitted, as you may know already, DWR accepted a modified and designed funding agreement that increased funding by over three times. Lastly, in terms of public outreach, public outreach has been regular and continuous throughout the last year. We've had meetings about the design at both downstairs and at the community center. We've had focus meetings with property owners, especially those with residential or homes that are pretty close to the river. And they will continue to go on. In fact, a week from today, we will have another meeting for property owners regarding the real estate acquisition and relocation process that will be held at the Southport So looking forward, looking at future milestones, certainly the first one is we've completed the 55, the 65% drawings in terms of design. During the next, over the course of, between now and, well, sometime over the course of next year, probably sometime later this summer, we'll see 90% levy design as well as the offset area design. We anticipate the final EIR being presented to the West SAFCA Board later this summer. That's a critical milestone for us because it allows a lot of other things to happen once the project is deemed a project by the board. In addition to that, we'll be looking for an amended construction funding agreement with DWR to see the entire Southport project built. So we're hoping to use our existing agreement to have that modified so that that gets incorporated into that funding agreement. We will continue to do public outreach, not only for the EIR/ES, but also to let property owners know what they can expect and what some of the different processes are moving forward. And, you know, we're very involved in a number of coordination meetings with other agencies. In terms of FEMA remapping, we continue to be not mapped. So we're still moving forward. We're still, you know, active in Washington to try to make sure that West Sacramento is, is considering what's going on and that the improvements that we're putting in place are not going to result in a, in being mapped into a designation that would stall development. Furthermore, FEMA had started a new remap, or had a, went through a new modeling effort. It took public comment and to our knowledge, to the best of our knowledge, they have not recommenced remapping since that public comment period. As you know, there's also a regional flood management plan. The Central Valley Flood Protection Board, through the Department of Water Resources, is trying to look for regional flood program solutions. So they've established a number of working groups. West SAFCA is joined by Sacramento, the, and, and there's a number of groups that have come together. We've submitted and, or, DWR put up $10 million in funding for this particular process to allow regional entities to work together, try to come up with regional solutions that probably wouldn't be thought of by the, the local maintaining agencies in and of themselves. So the idea is that to have a broader geographic base that come up with regional solutions that DWR may be able to support in the future. West SAFCA was, has received the support of Yolo County and Sacramento to be the grant administrator for our particular regional planning project. We have submitted a proposal to DWR and work will commence once we receive a letter of commitment. Meeting I attended this morning indicates that that letter should be forthcoming within the next 10 days. This process is probably going to go on for the better part of the next year, maybe extending out to 18 months. But the idea is to have regional solutions that broad areas can agree upon and provide them, and provide some input to DWR about how they might be accomplished and including The last thing I want to touch on before I introduce Alicia Kirchner is a little bit about flood program transition changes. I spoke with Human Resources today, and between 40 and 50 applicants have applied for the flood protection manager job. That doesn't mean that we have that many qualified applicants. They still have to be gone through, but just to give you an update about the level of interest for that job. As you already know, Greg Faben was appointed to the public works manager and all of the team have been picking up and trying to fill in where we can. So Mark Zola continues to support the team, you know, through the, the working with MBK for reimbursement and keeping the board up to date on their current level of finances. John Powderly is assisting with the coordination of the EIR/ES, as well as our interface with the, with the federal government. Kendrick Jameson taking the lead on construction management. Toby Wong is providing engineering assistance, as well as working on utility relocation. And Derek Larson, who is here from MBK, has been providing overall stronger, greater public assist, or greater assistance to the team to, in terms of managing our business processes and keeping the, keeping it moving forward. And Greg, I believe is, you know, in term, and sometime in February, will be coming forward with a proposal to make sure that flood protection is its own division within the public works program. That concludes my portion of the presentation. I'd like to introduce Alicia Kirchner. I think you've heard her before. She's here to do a presentation that was presented to the board. She's also accompanied by, of two of her staff, which I'll let her introduce. And then at the conclusion of that, if you have any questions, the team is here to respond. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Alicia Kirchner. I am with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in Sacramento. I specifically am chief of our planning division. Our planning organization has responsibility for investigating flood risk reduction issues and developing decision documents that we put before Congress, making recommendations for, for, for projects to be invested in, in partnership with federal government, state and local governments. So tonight, I'm here to present an overview of the status of what we call the general reevaluation report, which for all intents and purposes is a feasibility study. And I will go ahead and touch upon quickly the status of some of our other collaborative efforts that are part of your flood protection program. Going to focus on the general reevaluation report and some key items of interest associated with that. One will be the significance of a milestone that we hit last year in 2012. We refer to that as a feasibility scoping meeting. I'll, I'll talk about that. As well as address the schedule to complete the general reevaluation report. And I'm also going to talk about an initiative that the Corps of Engineers is undertaking agency-wide. We refer to it as planning modernization, and it has a nickname, three by three by three, which I will explain. And then I'll also touch on the status of our credit, your credit packages that have been under consideration, will be under consideration as part of your EIP program and how those relate ultimately to the general revaluation report. So the overview of our collaborative efforts. With regards to your early implementation program, our role as you're developing and implementing those projects is twofold, at least from my perspective. One, you're working with the Corps to develop documentation that gains permission to modify an existing federal project. We call it the 408 program. So you're, you're showing that it is safe to modify an existing federal project. You show the improvements and the Corps conducts a review to grant that approval. As part of that, my office gets involved with working with your folks to develop an EIS/EIR, environmental impact statement, environmental impact report, that go along, that goes along with that, that action because the Corps of Engineers granting permission to modify a federal project constitutes a federal action and that has a NEPA, that triggers a NEPA process for us. So we've been involved with that process. Your I Street Bridge and your CHP and River Sites are completed. We are working with you on your development of your EIP for your Southport site. And our schedules for the GRR and your EIP are aligned and will continue to coordinate to make sure that they remain aligned. We have completed construction on the slip repairs from the previously constructed federal project, and those repairs have been completed. Those sites have been turned over. And our SAC bank protection project site at River Mile 57.2 is fundamentally complete. It's functionally complete. The flood protection features are in place. We're conducting reviews to make sure that things were done in accordance to core standards and criteria. And with that, I'll go ahead and roll into the update on the general reevaluation report. So I'll quickly mention, this is sort of a recap of our activities last calendar year, 2012. We started the year off this time last year, working towards a traditional Corps of Engineers planning process milestone, referred to as the feasibility scoping meeting. And that is an, we consider that to be an early crucial milestone of vertical engagement within the Corps. When I say vertical engagement, I mean our district office working on developing the actual report. We have two levels of higher Corps authority, a regional headquarters called South Pacific Division in San Francisco, and they have responsibility to make sure that we have sound quality control practices in place throughout the development of our projects. We also work vertically with our headquarters in Washington, DC, who ultimately are gearing up to make sound recommendations to the Office of Management and Budget and the Assistant Secretary of the Army for Civil Works. They help work with us throughout the project development process to ensure that the types of things we're recommending at the district level ultimately be referred to Congress for action, that they can be, developed to be consistent with the programs and policies of the administration. And the OMB and the Assistant Secretary of the Army for Civil Works are a part of making sure that we have solid decision-making when we make our recommendations to Congress. So that feasibility scoping meeting is an early step that's crucial because it helps define the problems, the without project condition, what the future would look like if there was no additional federal involvement in the area. And it also gives us an indication as to whether or not we've identified a good array of solutions, alternative solutions. We hit that milestone last March, which was one month after the Corps came out with a pretty significant revision to how we go about conducting our planning program, so conducting these feasibility-type studies. So we kept our eye on the ball and marched forward to hit that milestone last March. And then we sat back and looked at the new guidance and what it told us and what it didn't tell us. And we went about applying it and adjusting the general revaluation report to meet the spirit of the guidance. And that's largely what we did last summer. And we were able to engage with our division and headquarters offices last July to show them how we had interpreted this guidance and applied it to the general revaluation report. And we got positive feedback that we were on the right track. With that, I'll go ahead and talk about planning modernization and what it consists of and how it affects our studies. So fundamentally, the Corps of Engineers is trying to be responsive to a longstanding complaint and concern on the part of non-federal sponsors, U.S. wide, nationwide, that our study process is taking too long and costing too much. Taking too long is challenging for sponsors that are trying to quickly, relatively quickly, address real flood risk to their communities. And the cost, these studies are cost shared between federal and non-federal government, and so the, the cost is of a concern as well. And the non-federal sponsors across the And the non-federal sponsors across the Corps have voiced their concerns repeatedly for many years to Congress, and Congress is taking a look at the program as well. So the Corps had gone about, has gone about reevaluating our planning program to see what we might do differently so that we can be more responsive to the needs of the nation. And that really means tightening up our focus and looking at what we consider to be the most viable flood risk management area, studies that are underway for the highest risk areas nationwide. One of the challenges associated with the Corps' program has been, there are so many investigations in the national study portfolio, had been on the order of magnitude of over, over 600 investigations nationwide. Not all of those are getting funded at levels that allow for meaningful progress from year to year to year. And the longer things take, the longer, the more they're going to cost. And that's just very much what we were finding to be the case. So we spent a lot of time in 2012, looking at the national portfolio and evaluating it against some criteria to see if some studies nationwide needed to be rescoped or even terminated. And some of the criteria were, has it been actively receiving federal dollars? Has a study actively been receiving non-federal dollars? And if the answer to either of those questions is no, chances are that the study was going to be deferred or reclassified as inactive. That happened to a number of investigations across the Corps. We also asked a question, does it look like the study is identifying something that warrants federal participation? And the answer to that question in a number of cases nationwide was also no. So, so far, we've thinned a program that was over 600 investigations down to in the order of 250 of remaining active studies, UCS wide. We are fine with our West Sacramento general reevaluation report. We've been able to survive those types of criteria and questions. And so it is considered to be a high priority, remaining active investigation to date. So these imperatives for change caused the Corps to look at this, look at the program, the planning program, and come up with some guidance that helps us do a few things quick, more quickly, and we think more effectively. It's really about taking a look immediately, and we did that in 2012, shortly after the guidance came out, at the ongoing investigations to look to see if the information we had so far showed us that there's likely federal interest in participating in a, in a solution, in a project. So planning modernization in large part is about getting to that understanding or realization much sooner in the life of a typical study. Because the portfolio of investigations nationwide is shrunk, has shrunk, resources should be available to focus on those studies that remain active. And that should be, that should be a good thing for being able to complete the remaining active studies. We did find in 2012 that our headquarters reviewers, they conduct policy reviews on any of our investigations, that their plates were very, very full because all of that large portfolio of investigations was getting scrutinized and they were all very involved in that. So we did experience some delays in getting some of their attention, but that didn't slow us down. That just meant they were a little slower to keep up with some of the progress we were able to make last year. The planning program still allows for acknowledgement that local sponsors might have a plan that is different from the one that the federal government identifies as being in the federal interest, that you'd actually want to implement. We still can make allowances for something that we call a locally preferred plan if you choose to implement something like that, if there is a difference between what the federal government would otherwise recommend. And we really have this reoccurring theme, and my next couple of slides touch on it. The idea, and really how we feel we can go about doing things more quickly, is to dial down in the feasibility study phase, our level of analysis that we're using to base our decision-making on. That doesn't mean that we have a reduction in the level of engineering, economic, environmental work that goes into actually designing and constructing a project. But when it comes down to picking a plan relative to other plans and making that investment decision, we're looking at doing that based on less information without reducing the quality of the information. It really comes down to identifying critical information that's necessary to understand what the alternative plans we look at, cost and accomplish, and not getting caught up in the weeds and chasing down additional nice to have information. We think there's tremendous cost savings, cost savings to have there in, in that arena. But we also need in doing that to identify any risk or uncertainty associated with not having some degree of, of additional information. But we believe in identifying that we still can have a quality recommendation. And again, this vertical integration, the idea of the district office in Sacramento engaging and getting the attention of our division and headquarters offices much more frequently, more regularly throughout the process will help keep our, an understanding of our studies fresh in their minds, and that helps with moving things forward more quickly. We believe we can get some direct feedback in a much more quick and constructive fashion than we otherwise might. Typically, we don't usually engage headquarters until we're very near the end of a project development process, the feasibility study process. So this is better from that standpoint. The nickname three by three by three came to us because we have some basic premises associated with this planning modernization initiative. We've been challenged, well, we've been told in part and challenged in part, that our studies from here on out should not cost more than $3 million. That is total project costs, so that feasibility studies are typically cost shared, 50% federal, 50% non-federal. So I do mean total project cost. They should be completed within three years from start to finish. The third three was originally intended to mean that increased coordination between the district, our division headquarters, and our national headquarters. Our deputy commanding general, when describing the third three, said that it meant a report needed to fit into a three-inch binder. So we have four definitions to three by three by three now, which we're, we're living with.
I was hoping it was three pages long.
I wish. So what's different? Again, this kind of comes back to that reoccurring theme of planning modernization, which is to really understand in our scoping, what is the critical must-have information? What is the information that we don't believe is germane to making a decision and understanding the differences between alternative plans? Our vertical engagement will be decision-focused. We engage headquarters much more regularly, and when we do that, we are making decisions. We're teeing up decisions for them to make so that we don't go back and rethink our prior decisions or our conclusions from earlier engagement with them. We're trying to really memorialize and keep traction and momentum in getting through our process more quickly. And they always encourage us to develop our report earlier in the process as opposed to later in the process. Our planning modernization process actually now memorializes some required earlier products, which I think is a good thing. It causes us to write sooner and get review of what we're writing sooner so that we know we're developing a report that's going to hit the mark. What's not different is, again, we are still relying on sound engineering, environmental and economic information, real estate information, and our environmental analysis. We are still complying with all the laws and regulations, which we would normally comply with. This doesn't change any of that. It's really in the level of detail and the assumptions we, we make, being able to satisfy those requirements. And we still engage with the public, not because just that we're required to, but we know that developing a project that's implementable includes a, a public participation program. In this case, we've been dovetailing with your EIP public product, public program. So our bottom line is, we do believe generally that our studies will be completed in a, in a quicker amount of time, at less cost. We've already rescoped the remaining active studies and there's considerable savings in our study costs that we believe we've attained nationwide for the whole study program. I'll show you the reduction in study costs that we've estimated for the general reevaluation report here for West Sacramento. We're still looking at developing a quality decision document that, in my words, is approvable. That's my bottom line when we're developing a, a decision document, is it's got to be something that's approvable. Again, we're looking at managing, having risk-informed decision-making, where we're identifying what our decisions are based on, what uncertainty is included in the information that those decisions and recommendations are based on, and what that means so that we can have, all the partners involved can make risk-informed decisions. And in the end, we believe that the Corps' nationwide study program will be a strong, viable program that Congress will be confident in funding. Oops. Thank you. This is a graphic that shows our study milestone durations and flow. Across the top, we have added the West Sacramento GRR milestone dates to show how it aligns with our new process. So that milestone one, that alternatives milestone, is what we met last March 2011, I'm sorry, 2012. And we are now moving towards identification of what we call the tentatively selected plan. This is the plan that the Corps, the state, and the city in Wesafka would agree to recommend to Congress for authorization to be implemented. So that's a really critical milestone scheduled to occur this summer in August. This will be the topic of discussion over the next few months as we figure out what, which project it is that we're going to recommend together. And I have a little bit of information to show you on the alternatives that are being considered in the general reevaluation report in just a moment. The remaining milestones are sort of procedural ones. The number two, identification of that tentatively selected plan, is a big one. We, once we identify that, it really becomes getting the reviews accomplished that help us turn a draft recommendation into a final recommendation. So after that milestone two, we have a public and agency review of our draft EIS, EIR, and the draft general reevaluation report. We get feedback from agencies and the public. We see what may or may not need to be modified in terms of the project that we're looking at recommending. And then we go through finalizing our documents and developing what we call a report of the chief of engineers. That is the document ultimately that the administration sends to Congress to use as a basis for authorization in a Water Resources Development Act. So the alternatives under consideration in the general reevaluation report, in addition to the no-action plan, we are looking at an alternative that focuses on making levee repairs to deal with seepage instability issues. It would also include raising levees along the Sacramento River. We have an alternative that would look at doing the seepage instability repairs, not raising levees along the Sacramento River, but instead widening the Sacramento Bypass by about 1,500 feet, essentially doubling it. That would pull water out of the American Sacramento system, put a bit more into the Yolo Bypass system, thereby eliminating the need to do levee raises south of the confluence with the American River and the SAC, Sacramento River. We also looked at something we call the I Street diversion structure, which would include, and actually a primary feature, would be construction of a gate in the Sacramento River at about I Street, which would divert flows, a considerable, a considerably greater volume of flows into the Sacramento Bypass and Yolo Bypass system. That could effectively eliminate the need to do any levy work at all on the Sacramento River, south of the confluence. This idea has been looked at pretty closely through, I think, a four-day rigorous partnership workshop, set of workshops, because it is a very new idea. It's not something that we've looked at in, in the area. And because it's such a new idea, we don't have a lot of information on it, how it could be designed, how it could be constructed, how it would be operated, how it would function, would it work? Would it work reliably? And so we got a better handle on that. Our take now is that the hydraulic impacts associated with redirecting that degree of, that volume of flow into the Yolo Bypass system would be very, very difficult to implement until we really understood what the impacts were and what you do, what we would do as part of offsetting those impacts into Yolo County. So right now, if I had to look into my crystal ball and forecast what plan I think we will likely be recommending to Congress, I would say it's more likely to be the first alternative, which is the levy repairs, including the raises on the Sacramento River. With a caveat that the widening the Sacramento Bypass is actually looking pretty good when we are also looking at doing a general revaluation report on the other side of the river with the state and SEAFKA. It could be that that kind of a regional solution could be advantageous for both sides of the river working together. That would be, that would mean widening the bypass would be a shared cost between both flood control agencies as well as the state. And I think it would be, the amount each side, each sponsor would pay would be determined based on the degree of benefit they received. So I, I, we're having discussions with Wesafka, SEAFKA, the state, to see what makes most sense regionally and locally on both sides of the river to recommend to Congress. My sense is that the I Street diversion structure, while it might be an interesting idea, would take many, many years to decades to really flush out to a level where it could be implemented. So I would envision that that idea could get kicked into some of the regional or basin-wide planning efforts that the partners are all working on. Both, all three of these alternatives would include something that's looking promising in our investigation, and that is a closure structure being constructed along the deepwater ship channel. And I have two maps that show what that could look like and what that could accomplish. This is a picture of the, the area of study under the general revaluation report for West Sacramento. The red lines indicate levy work that we, of some sort, that we would anticipate being a part of that first alternative. And this is a comparison map that shows construction, with construction of a closure structure across the deepwater ship channel, where the box indicates could eliminate the need to do levy work along the North Port Levy, South Port Levy, as well as some of the expanse of the deepwater ship channel levees as well. So it's, it's looking like it's something that's worth pursuing as part of any alternative that we pursue. This is a look at our schedules, at our schedule to complete the general reevaluation report. We have an in-progress review, so one of those vertical milestone check-ins with our division and headquarters in early February on the 7th and 8th. We have our tentatively selected plan milestone this summer in August, where we declare as partners the plan that we intend to recommend to Congress. After that public and agency review process is complete, we have that agency decision milestone end of the calendar year in December. And then we're working on finalizing our recommendation. Most of 2014 would be spent detailing out the, the recommended plan, taking it to a higher level of design so that we can get a really good cost estimate that would be the basis for congressional authorization. It's important that we have integrity in the project cost estimate that Congress uses when they authorize a project, so that it, it indoors. And then that chief's report would be completed in December 2014. This is consistent with the state of California requirements for urbanized areas to demonstrate that they have a plan or a, a plan that's been laid out and has approvals to, to meet state legislation requirements. This is a look at our study costs prior to planning modernization. Our estimate for the study was $10.1 million. It included a lot of design work to be able to understand these different alternatives to a deeper degree. We are, we have reduced that estimate to 6.85 million. 3.85 million had already been expended prior to planning modernization. So we did some rescoping last year and were able to tighten up that estimate. Because we were an ongoing study, we're not held to the requirement that we cost no more than 3 million. Any ongoing studies just needed to go through a meaningful rescoping exercise and show what we felt we needed to be able to bring an ongoing study to completion with the spirit of planning modernization, and we were able to do that. And you have been providing what we call in-kind services, which is work as opposed to cash, towards accomplishment of the general reevaluation report. Your EIP work lends itself to that, and you're able to get credit for some of that as part of your non-federal cost share contribution. So we have a, a few different credit situations that are in play at the moment. One is, we have one, you have one EIP that has been approved by the Secretary of the Army for Civil Works for consideration of credit under the Section 104 Credit Authority. So your I Street Bridge work was, is, is considered creditable under that 104 So your I Street Bridge work was, is, is considered creditable under that 104 authority. The general reevaluation report will make a determination as to how much of your 104, of your I Street EIP project work is considered creditable under the 104 authority. Your South Port EIP, we are working closely with you on to make sure that we get a credit agreement in place prior to you beginning to construct that project. The trigger for the Corps of Engineers for consideration of credit under the credit authority that remains, and that is the 221 credit authority, is release of the draft report for public and agency review. At that point in time, memorandum of understanding could be entered into between the partners, and then you proceed with implementing your EIP for South Port. We do not currently have a credit authority that is covering your CHP EIP site, nor your Rivers EIP site. And I know that's, remains an issue of concern, and I understand that you're continuing to work that issue. My office will continue to advise in any way we can. That's really something that's outside of the purview of our district or division offices or even our headquarters office. That's a, that's a policy that's established by the Secretary of the Army for Civil Works. And we, we do know that there's a lot of interest in, in additional revisions to our credit authorities. We deal with the credit authorities that we have in hand, and we'll just remain flexible if there are any adjustments as we go, so that we can adjust as well. With that, I just want to say that I think planning modernization process has been a positive thing for the general reevaluation report. That in addition to making sure that we have a schedule that aligns very well with state requirements, as well as with your EIP schedule. And right now, it's, everything's lined up with us completing our chief's report in December of 2014 and our draft report later this year. The schedules are tracking well right now, so it really just remains a matter of me making sure that I and my leadership colleagues in the Sacramento office keep our prioritization on the investigation, keeping it moving forward, and that we do everything we can to enable our headquarters reviewers to, to review things in a timely fashion. And with that, I can go ahead and take any questions.
Questions? Mr. Kristof, did you want to ask?
I do have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you. You do an outstanding job, you and your team, so thank you very much. When you talked about the slip repairs that the Core was responsible for a couple, few years ago, are those repairs certified?
I'm going to ask Tom Carvenen, our project manager, to address that. Tom is project manager on those repairs as well.
Right. Tom, could, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone, because we have an audience of tens at home that are, that want to be able to hear the answer.
Hello, my name is Tom Carvenen. I'm project manager for both the West Sacramento GRR and the SACBink project. Those are not certified at this point. That's something that, as my understanding, the Central Valley Flood Protection Board does after our recommendation and turning over, and that, that hasn't been accomplished yet, so.
Okay.
But we've, we've completed and we've given the notice of project completion, and so...
But is there still a certification process for the Core? Because the Core used to, years and years ago, certify a levy after it was completed and this and that. And so is it...
FEMA, I think you're thinking of FEMA, so at least that's...
Oh, okay. Maybe. All right. I, I, and that's the only question I have on that part. I guess the other question I have really is for Alicia, and that's the 104 permit versus the, the 221. After your presentation at West Sac-Safka last week, I had some other jurisdictions that heard the discussion, and they, they wanted to know, what is the advantage of doing things like West Sacramento has done, and they are starting to do as far as funding the matching funds in essence? In other words, the sales tax, we, we passed a sales tax measure, we did a development fee, and, and we did tax assessments, so people assess themselves all over again. Because we're very aggressive. You know, we know we've got this river right next to us, but other communities are asking, should they be doing those things if these kinds of 104, the 104 goes away, and the 221, they're really not sure they're going to get any funding out of that? And so they're asking me, and I really didn't know how to respond to that. I said, "The only thing I can tell you is what we did." And because we are very aggressive, and we pass those things, and quite frankly, when we go back, when we go to the state, or when we go to, back to Washington DC, the people back there are very aware of how aggressive we were and what we have done. And they understand what we've done. So that's what I have told the folks that, that I have talked to after the presentation. I guess it's the 221 permit that, it's just got everybody sort of stymied. It seems like it's something that, that takes a while, and maybe it's just not ready, I don't know. But I don't know what, what the issue is.
I, I think for communities to decide whether or not they want to pursue implementation of projects in advance of a federal project really comes down to understanding their own capability and their own priorities. And it's probably a different answer for different communities, depending on what they're able to, to do. The, the consistent aspect between our various credit authorities, the old 104 credit authority, the current 221 credit authority, is that credit is, it's, it's risky. It is a low budgetary priority year to year. That is, that's fairly consistent. And so there are risks associated with it. 104 provided an opportunity for a non-federal partner to undertake construction of a, of a project or a portion of a project much earlier in our process. The 221 now requires that that work not begin if they want to consider it eligible for credit until release of a draft document. That's considerably far into a feasibility study life, although planning modernization does help make sure that that's about two years as opposed to many more years later than that. There's no assurance that policies won't change, that could work to sponsors' advantage, that could work to their disadvantage. And it's really just making sure you understand what you're dealing with and what the risks are associated with it. That's where my office can help in trying to understand those things, forecast those things.
Well, can your office articulate the, frustration's probably too strong of a word, but at the same time, you know, can, can your office articulate those kinds of feelings at the, to the national level so that they, they really have the understanding that this really isn't just a delay tactic from a financing perspective? But i- is there something that, that we can do to help you continue down the path so that we can be aggressive? And because it seems like, for a community our size, to, to spend 20 years or 25 years getting through this whole process is, you know, it seems like it's a long time for protection of those citizens.
I would say you're doing probably the most powerful thing you can do, which is you've allied yourselves with communities across the nation that have similar situations. And I really think that's probably how change will come about. We do relay the challenges that we face up our chain of command to make sure that they understand what we call, and I think they agree with, are the unintended consequences of the change in policy. Meanwhile, my office continues to do what we can do, which is deal with the, the playing field as it is. And, and we'll continue to do that and, and deliver the GRR on the schedule that we have and work with you on your EIP.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was, Director Stockton, the Director of Civil Works for the Core, who's been to the city twice, I think, in recent years, was at our mayor's meeting as well. And it's, it, without giving anyone up, I mean, it's very clear that the, that the leadership of the Core has conveyed these issues to the Assistant Secretary, who is an appointee of the President. And, and so I think that, you know, that, that message has been, has been transmitted around some of the consequences, and also just some of the, some of the, the wrong incentives that it's, that it creates. Because it, it wasn't as though under the prior regime, you just automatically got credit. I mean, as, as, as Mr. Kirchner said, the appropriation for that was risky, but it was also, I mean, you, you, you had, if, if what you did wasn't actually then what was recommended in the GRR, you didn't get credit. So you're, you're taking, you're taking lots of risks, but you're doing that in, on balance because you want to improve or lessen the flood risk that your citizens are facing and that your businesses and others are facing. That's a choice that local communities could make. It was a good thing for the federal government on the whole, because if cities, communities like ours were, were improving safety for people and property, without the federal government having to spend a dime other than what it was already doing in terms of a preparation of a GRR, that was all, it's all to the good to the federal government. And so I think there, there is pretty broad agreement, and certainly the message I've, I've gotten, you know, from body language and, and other comments from, from the, from the Core at every level has been that they, they're, they understand, and that certainly our, our experience with the district has been that as well. I think in part, the districts, the response of the district to try to, you know, how do we, how do, how do we, how can we help to deal with these challenges by making sure we get to the feasibility study report in, at a, at a point in time, in this particular case now, where at lea, we can't, we can't, as you say, can't fix the issue at the district level around the CHP Academy site or the river site, but how do we make, how do we get all the timing of this right aligned so that the South Port project can proceed? That's, that's really the critical question that the, that we and the district can do our best to try to solve within the constraints of 221. The, the, the prior projects, we're going to have to get a solution from the, you know, from the Congress or, or from, from the Assistant Secretary. But I think the district understands as well as we do the, the need and the tools that we have at our, that we do have at our disposal to, to get the, the South Port project aligned with the, to get the feasibility study report delivered in time to be useful for the South Port project levy. So I mean, at the, at the, I should say, the mayor's water council meeting where, where Director Stockton was, you know, going around the room, every, every single mayor in the room feels like they have to talk. And they all, you know, every one of them is, "Can you help us? We're having, we're struggling with the, our Core office locally about this issue," or "We're not getting any responsiveness from the Core about this." And, and it was a little bit, I was a little bit of fish out of the water, because I was saying, you know, we, we've had a tremendous relationship with our, with the folks at the district level at every level. And so we, we need you, Director Stockton, to support them. You know, they don't need a fire lit under them, but we need to get this work done together. So I, I think that message is getting conveyed certainly by, by the, by the team here in Sacramento. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. I know we've heard this before, but I think it was very well put together and got everything laid out. And the planning modernization, it looks like it's off to a good start. I don't know when you're going to have statistics on, you know, how it's working out, but we've always enjoyed our relationship with the Core and responsiveness, so we are probably one of the outlying cities that has had good, good, good response. One question on the I Street diversion. Is there any discussion about decertification of the Sacramento Rivers and navigable waterway? To do that, would that involve some type of decertification?
We have not looked at any sort of decertification of the navigation project. We're looking at the navigation channel in terms of the role it plays in flood risk, in terms of potential levy failure, potential flooding from the ship channel, backwater effects, things like that, and potential solutions to the flooding problem. We have not, we, we wouldn't have a reason necessarily, from the standpoint of the general reevaluation report, to look at something like, like that.
I was just curious if there's a, I mean, a diversion to me along the I Street Bridge looks like something that would stop shipping. Is it that type of diversion?
No, it's something that would be, it would be some sort of a gated structure that would only be put into operation to manage high, very high flood flow.
Like a weir type of thing?
Yeah, I'm, I have a hard time envisioning exactly. And then there's a few different options of what it could look like. We've been consulting across the Core for other geographic locations that have done things like that, to see what the different options are. So it looks like there's a structure, some, some version of a structure that could be put into place, but it would only be operated for, to manage high, high-volume flood flow.
Thank you.
One more question. Just one more, really sort of a comment. If you are looking at two alternatives, and one of them is levees are raised and widened and this and that, and the other one is, pertains to the bypass, one of the issues that I would like the Core to look at, and that would be, there's a notch in our bypass, where the water comes through the various places, and it, as it's going out to the, the delta, there's a, a large notch. It's an eddy, like, and it causes a big eddy when high flows are going through. And it seems like from a hydrology perspective, if we were to cut that off and make, put another levy in so that that notch doesn't exist, just becomes, you know, bare ground. That's something I'd like to have the Core look at if, and maybe you already have, I don't know, but if there is something that is going to happen to the bypass.
Okay. I, I'm not certain if we've looked at that in particular. I'm going to look over.
Okay. But I mean...
It's been discussed, and we can't...
Okay, great. Super. Yeah, yeah.
So that is something that we've looked at and will be able to report out on as we go forward and describe our alternative plan.
It's just something to add to the list.
As long as it doesn't add another month.
Yeah, no, no.
No more time, no more time.
No more time.
Yes, what is it? We're only going to investigate what we have, what we have to, and...
Yes.
Mr. Viegas?
No, it's all been said. Thank you very much. It's a very helpful presentation, and thank you for being here. I know that the collaborative effort that's, that's existed for the I Street work, for the CHP, for the Rivers Project, they were crucial for us, and to get those going and get those resolved as quickly as we did was, was a huge step for us, so thank you.
My pleasure, and I do want to acknowledge, your team has been really fantastic to work with. It is a collaborative process, and we, we definitely benefit from that on our, our end with the Core.
All right, well, thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Thanks for the whole, the entire presentation, actually. This, I mean, it's extraordinarily important project for the community and for the region, for obvious reasons in terms of the protection of life and property, but it's also incredibly complicated. You know, all of these section, you know, the 104, the 108, the 221, all, that's just, that's just the three that you've mentioned tonight. There's a million of that, 500 different funding sources, all these timeframes, all these studies, while we're also building projects and improving projects. And it's very difficult for the, for members of the public to understand, and it's even a challenge sometimes for us to keep it all together. And so it's, this was a very helpful presentation. Of course, the takeaway for folks in the community is, is that we, we and DWR and the Core are, are working hard to reduce flood risk. We, you don't call it flood protection anymore for the plain reason that there's no such thing as protection from floods, that you're only, you're only managing the level of risk. And so as we, every time we do this conversation, it's just for the, for the tens of people that are watching, which is a reminder that flood insurance and appropriate preparations for the potential flooding is a critical part of our strategy as well, that this is, the engineers and the, and the city and the Core are not solving this entirely. We're doing our part, but everyone in the community has a role to play for the, for their own protection and reduction of risk. But we really, really do appreciate your team's work and, and your willingness to be part of the council meeting and to share the update on the process with the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes our, our consideration of item 11. Council calendar, Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is our last meeting of the month, and the annual council planning retreat will take place next week. On the February calendar, the February 6th Port Commission meeting is not going to be happening, and that will be, there will be a special meeting on February 20th for the port instead of the February 6th meeting.
Okay.
And that's all, thank you.
Questions on the calendar? City manager report?
Mayor, council members, the mayor did go over the trip we took to Washington DC last week. There's a summary in your packets. I just wanted to thank Mike Lucan, did a great job in, in the preparation of that. And our team back in Washington, Holland Night, did a wonderful job. I think we're really in good position to have them there. And timing this with the mayor's conference to have Marika Baldwin there was very, very helpful. Also, in regard to Washington DC, we put the cap-to-cap registration form there. If you're interested, please let me know or, or the clerk know. I just want to make a note that there's an early discount. If you let us know by February 15th, we could do some savings. Thank you.
This, first time of West Sacramento is...
This, first time of West Sacramento is, is leading the whole event, not honorary, but for real.
Ab Sandina is the chair.
Yeah.
Planning Commissioner is the chair of the whole trip, so, great. All right, questions on the City Manager Reports? City Attorney Reports? Staff direction for members of the council? We have no future, no future agenda item requests? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Johansson, and second by Mr. Kristof. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed during that? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.